William Howard Tatt.
There he is.
I had a hint to help you out.
That's great.
William Howard Tatt, known for two things. He'll chuck his bat up and throw out a daily game.
Now, where, what, what game did he throw the first pitch out?
That would have been too difficult. Ralph was scoring on it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking you.
The Cincinnati Reds versus the Harrisburg Senators.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I don't know. I didn't have that in mind.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very, very good cohesion.
Okay, sidewalks.
Mr. Brooks.
Harry, it's good to see you back.
Yes, very good.
Thank you.
I know you're, you're not full strength yet, but it's, you're welcome.
We're heading in the right direction.
You, you bet. It's good to see you.
Yes.
Give us a beautiful now.
Um, well, I mean, I, I mean, what, you want a synopsis of what the inspection program is?
Program and kind of what you're, where you're at in the program, little bit overview, there might be some questions.
Okay, well, uh, the ordinance, uh, outlines that we should inspect approximately 25% of the borough. Now, I look at that as 25% of the borough where there are sidewalks because there's, there may be 30, 40% of the borough with no sidewalks at all. So, inspecting that would be ridiculous.
Yeah.
And we do that on a, supposedly on an annual basis. Now, unfortunately, the last time that I completed that was in '21. Uh, there were no sidewalk inspections done last year. I've already mapped out the areas that I'm going to include, uh, in that. Uh, two years ago, when I, when I did it, uh, it had not been done for several years prior to that. So, at that time, my focus was the downtown area and, uh, within three, four blocks of any of the schools. Because they were, they would be the high traffic areas and, uh, from my point of view, from a safety point of view, the areas that would, uh, be of more focus and more traffic. So, this year, I just kind of expanded that out and again, taking into consideration areas where there really are sidewalks. Burnside Street is an example. Yeah, there's some sidewalk, but there's probably 60% of Burnside doesn't even have a sidewalk. Technically, should they be inspected? Probably, but, you know, there are other areas where there are blocks and blocks of sidewalks, um, that are higher traffic and are going to be my focus this year. So, having that already mapped out, uh, within the, probably within next week, uh, I'll start to, uh, inspect those areas. Obviously, make note of any deficiencies and, uh, letters get sent out. According to the ordinance, the property owners have 120 days to fix the sidewalk. Along with the letter, we send a list of contractors. That list is specifically indicated that we don't recommend these people, but we provide them as a service. These are people that we know have done sidewalk work within the borough. There is a provision that because of the crunch of work, if they can't get the work scheduled within 120 days, that they can apply for a extension of an additional 120 days. That'd be eight months, uh, to get it done. In 2021, the success rate was almost 100%. The only people that I had a little bit of problem with were on Spring Street in the business district. And knowing that we were, we had a plan for a streetscape in that area, um, and I re-inspect it, it's not done, I send a phone.
Those streets that we gave you as a list that weren't on that ones you inspected, are they going to be on your inspection list this time around?
So...
The one I'm specifically thinking of is on Phoenix Avenue.
Oh, Phoenix Avenue is on my list this year.
Okay.
Willough Bank Street, Reynolds Avenue, Phoenix Avenue. So, that whole area from basically the railroad tracks out. Everything that's in the borough.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of specifically.
Okay. I do, I, when you first said that, I had a blank and I didn't, I mean, didn't recall that, but when you said Phoenix, yes.
And just so everybody's aware, we get calls off and on about the sidewalk in disrepair. You'll take those and follow up on them? Is that norm, is that pretty normal?
Yep. Oh, it is, it is. I mean, anytime we get a specific complaint
Yes.
from somebody, uh, even if it doesn't fall within the parameters of what we've designed as the 25% for the current year, if it's egregious, um, and specifically if a resident will complain about it, you know, we'll go take a look at it. And if it's, uh, doesn't meet the standards of the ordinance, then, uh, we'll, we'll proceed.
Sounds good.
Same way.
Thank you.
Yep. Harry, on, on, in '21, were sidewalks done? Were they, were they inspected and then expected to be done? Or didn't you get a chance to inspect them in '21?
I did.
I'll tell you what I'm talking about is behind the sheriff's office in the brown house, directly behind them, the, the, those were painted. I think it had two different colors.
Yeah, um...
And that's the, the, the reason I brought up, because people complained about, what's going on? Why isn't this happening? Why isn't this happening? And, you know, we kind of had an idea why, but, you know, we didn't get into that stuff. It was just...
I can't, I, I, yeah, I can't tell you this specifically. This is my assumption of what went on there. Uh, because I had a problem with that property owner with grass, with weeds, um, and with some, um, siding hanging off the side of the, of the building. I couldn't get any response from them. And then, um, I wasn't even on, I, I was unsure whether anyone was actually living in the building. And it appeared to me that recently, somebody moved out of the property.
Well, that somebody purchased it and now it's for sale. There's a for sale sign up there, but nothing was done with the sidewalk.
Correct. So, uh, I misspoke when I said only Spring Street, yes. Uh, that was another one that there was. But there were a lot of extenuating circumstances about even getting in contact with the property owner. But that, starting behind the jail and out High Street are on the list for this year.
Okay.
So, that'll be a part of the routine.
So, just to clarify, there's a few, there's a small percentage of properties that nobody responds to. It went back to the bank or whatever. The bank's out of state.
Yes.
Certainly out of Bellefonte, and nobody responds. Nobody does anything. So, we, we deal with those occasionally. There's a percentage of our properties like that. So, you, there are occasions where there's a long-term problem. We're just trying to find somebody that will take responsibility.
Yeah, there, there was a house up on
Burnside.
On South Allegheny Street.
Oh, yeah, Burnside for a while.
Burnside. There's a house up on Bishop Street. The one that the roof was all covered, you know. We had a heck of a time. I had a heck of a time getting somebody to cut the weeds.
Yes.
Finally got somebody to cut them, but then they wouldn't do it routinely.
Yeah.
And, you know, even trying to communicate with them was not pick up the phone, call them, and they answered. You'd leave them a message, they maybe not call back, and you'd have to dog them.
Yes.
So, taking somebody like that to court or writing a fine for them is, is probably good, they're probably going to be non-responsive to that, too.
Yes.
Because they're out of state.
Yeah.
And it's a bank or, you know, it's, it was on foreclosure.
Right. So, so can, can we, as a borough, uh, do what's needed to be done and put a lien against the property?
We can.
We can?
We can as a lot, last resort.
And at what time do we consider doing that?
Uh, yeah, what we can do if we run into those is bring them back to council and say, you know, you want to pursue the legal costs and all that and the material costs and get, maybe get an estimate of what we're talking about.
Yeah, so, just so you know, that's an option for you if you, I didn't know that was an option.
Oh, it's an option in your ordinance, and I...
Yeah, and you, you...
Not to sound offensive, but I actually already referenced that.
Oh, yeah, okay. I don't remember.
Related to that, there's, there was a revision in the state law on abandoned and blighted properties. Is that something that, if, I know that's not in the ours, because that has come after we brought ours. Is that something we could merge together to kind of...
It's possible. I'd have to look at that language versus what we have, but...
Mr. Brooks, we've had, simply put, for those of us that are in the local council, we've had several residents and complaints about sidewalk conditions in the borough. I listened, you said that the overwhelming majority of the owners have complied with your previous request to repair their sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Would you say that there are right now, uh, a lot of sidewalks that are in need of repair? Forgetting the 20% analogies, as you, as you look throughout the borough, would you agree that there are, um, a lot of sidewalks that are in need of repair?
Your, your question was a lot? There, there are some, um, but, you know, the...
We've heard the term a lot, so I was asking you because you're, you're in the business.
No, I mean, generally speaking, I would say not. Um, you know, the majority, you know, if you wanted to look at a percentage, even of the, of, say, in, in '21, I would, I'm, I'm going to guess now. I mean, I could get you the actual number.
That's okay.
But, but, but I would say that of, of all the properties that were inspected as, in the routine procedure in '21, probably 80 to 85% were okay. And it's, it's, only winds up being that 15 or 20% that people have just neglected.
And that, that may be in just the area that you're inspecting though, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, so can, he might only be doing 25% of that. That doesn't mean the other 75%, there's one in badly need repaired, right?
And remember, and take into account, as I already said, um, in '21, when I did that, when I came back to work for the borough and I did that, there were several years before that.
Yes.
There were no inspections.
Right.
So, it, it could be, you know, i- if you're looking at the, I'm essentially in year, cycle two of a four, four-cycle plan. So, we, by the time you get to cycle four, that, that could be seven, eight years since they've been inspected. And maybe that sidewalk was marginal seven, eight years ago, and now it's bad.
So, that's why I say we will, and we do get complaints. We'll take complaints year-round. So, don't let Harry's description of only doing 25% a year bother anybody, because we'll take calls. We'll forward the information to Harry. He'll go out and check it out.
And if you, if you have a specific address
Yes.
that somebody has complained to you about, let me know, and the same applies for anyone in council.
Yes.
I mean, just let me know and I'll go take a look at it. Doesn't matter whether it's in that
Yes.
planned 25% for this year.
That, that's in regard to anything, not just sidewalks.
Yeah.
Oh, well, sure. Yeah, but right now, we're talking about sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
But that does apply to anything.
Do you need help?
No, that's a good, that's a good question, Ken.
I mean, I think your job sounds overwhelming, but hey, I, I mean, you said...
It's a part-time job, so how overwhelming can it be?
Well, maybe it needs to be full-time. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
And we, we support you through the office. We're always willing to do that. Whatever Harry needs, we're happy to help.
I mean, anybody, you know, if you want to turn into a full-time job, in my opinion, that would be a mistake. I'm just being honest with you, you know, especially in the winter time. I mean, um, this, this last year's not been normal for me, but previous to that, in the winter time, I'd be lucky if I got 10 hours in.
Yes.
And there's really nothing to do. You don't have weeds, you don't have grass growing.
In a month, 10 hours in a month.
10 hours in a pay period. Two, that's a two-week period.
Well, maybe we could inspect more sidewalks then, to get this taken care of. And not, not wait seven more years to get answers for, for sidewalk repair that we've been waiting for. We've heard from residents that, I understand it was a difficult year. And this is not a personal attack on you or your job, but we have heard that sidewalks were painted several years back, or a few years back, and, and they were marked because they needed repair, and they're still waiting for repair. So, if there's anything that we can do to, to expedite, speed that process up or get those letters out, or if you need help, that's what we're asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and again, if you can provide me with an address for those ones that were marked, that you believe that...
Well, who would have marked them?
Me.
Well, they're not. I mean, who would have went out and sprayed the, the paint on the sidewalks?
Me.
And what did that paint mean?
It's the indication to the, to the property owner of where on the sidewalk the deficiency is.
So, we already know...
So, if it's a crack or a chip or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all. Okay. We already know the addresses because they were already sprayed. So, maybe those can be the ones that we go after first to get the process started.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
And it could have been those properties, too, that if I were able to get them here.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand.
I don't want to tell Harry how to do his job. Yeah, I think he has it lined up the way when you have a concrete company coming in, it's grouped so that everything's kind of like in the same area. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then they move on. If there's room for more toward the end of that season, maybe we can still get them.
Well, I, you know, I had some people, I had some people, especially on Bishop Street, that had contractors who were pouring concrete in January and February of '22.
Yeah, there's always the keep it from freezing.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I, I may be, I, I think what, I agree what you're saying. If it's marked in previous years, let's get those guys first. And then, and, and I, you know, you're, you're very good at your data, so I'm sure you have that information. And I think we'd like to see those letters go out tomorrow. I mean, am I wrong on that? You know, on the ones that were marked before, and I understand, I'm not, you're, what you said, don't, I'm, we're not trying to tell you how to do it, but...
No, we're suggesting.
Yeah, yeah.
We're suggesting. No one's telling anyone anything.
Yeah, yeah.
He's out, he's standing, and we're supposed to ask him questions.
Yeah.
My question is, I've heard from residents that several years ago, paint was put on sidewalks. I, I don't know where that is. Who put the paint on sidewalks? Well, Harry did. Well, can we start with those?
Yeah.
That isn't telling anyone to do their job or being disrespectful about the job. That's, hey, can we get those letters out first?
So, I'm not really...
Do you agree on that, or?
Yeah. Let's also say that the borough, from time to time, because Adam puts paint down, I have paint on my sidewalks right now that I didn't put there, then the borough put there because they were marking the water lines.
Yes.
And the, and the gas company.
And the, and the gas, and the gas people were out marking, and the sewer lines are, up on Curtain Street, the sewer lines are marked, too.
That's why I say it's best if you have an address. Harry has his address, and he can check those.
Yep.
But any resident has an address they're concerned about, send us an email. We'll forward it to Harry. Then we'll check what we have.
Yep.
Any other questions for Harry?
Run, run there.
I don't run away from anything.
Thank you.
You're good.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Parking enforcement times.
I was going to leave Don, give us a reminder, kind of an overview.
Well, uh, I thought, I don't, Randy may have brought this up at one of the meetings, but currently, uh, as everybody knows, our enforcement times for parking is 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. On Saturdays, it's 9:00 AM to noon. So, that is the time that we will have, or could have, an enforcement officer, one of the three, in any of those timeframes. Uh, we don't get, you know, 64 hours of enforcement in a given week. I mean, but they stagger their work schedules so that they hit all the timeframes over, over a week's time or a two-week period of time. You know, we, they primarily take care of the downtown where we have the single-space parking meters. Single-space parking meters, all, one quarter will get you 15 minutes in any of those meters. We have three municipal lots that have a kiosk, so a kiosk is a minimum of a dollar to park in that, uh, lot. And then we have commuter parking spaces, resident commuter, and, um, I think, is it resident? Resident commuter and commuter.
Yes.
Three different permits that anyone can get the permit by going on to our website at www.bellefonte.net. Enter your license plate, your car, a little bit of information, put it in your credit card. You can do a recurring payment. Uh, they run anywhere from $15 a month to $25 a month. And I'd say that's pretty much a general overview on parking. Was, I think, not long ago that we just changed the, uh, you know, changed the times because we found that, you know, that the evening hours were actually more crowded in downtown than the morning hours. And we were trying to encourage, you know, the, uh, rental unit, uh, apartment dwellers from coming home after work at 5:00 o'clock and taking up all the downtown spaces. So, that was the rationale for going to 8:00.
The questions that I've received from the residents in the red parking park areas is basically, they have either people who come in to clean.
Joanne, some folks are having a difficulty hearing you in the...
Some people have, have people who come in to clean their house or something on a regular basis, and they would like to have a placard that's not particularly attached to a particular license plate that they can give to that person, and they're willing to pay for it on a monthly basis. Is that possible?
Uh, that's something we could consider. What we do currently is, for the resident parking, we offer five free parking spaces per month. So, a resident that, say, lives on Allegheny Street, that someone is, you know, coming over to clean or something their house, uh, they can go in and get them a free parking space for that day. All they just need their license plate. They would just go in and enter it. So, they can get up to five free parking spaces a month. But, uh, the placard is something that could be considered as well.
I, when I talked to, the lone residence talked to me a couple of times about it. I don't think she knew that that was a possibility. Is that something that we could do a, a quick mailing to the residents in those areas or, or an email or something?
Sure. I do know that the resident that you're referring knows now because I spoke with her myself.
Okay.
She was unaware that, she was unaware that there were free parking spaces.
I'm sure there are other residents along the street, too, that that would be helpful.
Sure. I, I will say, probably in the last, you know, in the last year, other than maybe two complaints from, uh, the long-term parking, I, I haven't had many calls here at the borough regarding it. Whether you all are hearing it or not, I, I can't say, but we're not getting a lot of, we're not getting a lot of calls.
Is, are we answering your questions, Randy? I don't know if that's, if you put this on or wanted us to be to talk about it.
Well, I put it on last year, but were you, were you looking at the hours that we have
Okay.
on the downtown parking meters?
Okay.
And because at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, there's people parking there because of court. And I think there's a couple other mornings that they also do that. But I think those hours could be adjusted to, you know, I, I know people come in and, and they're eating, you know, coming in for dinners and stuff, but they're probably getting in here around 6:00, 6:30. So, why couldn't we do like a 9 to 6, or 9 to 6:30?
I thought the last time we discussed this earlier this year, it's just been since January, we've really started the enforcement and thought that we would take six months or so just to get information.
That was last year.
That was, I mean, that was a couple, that was like, that was like two meetings ago.
Yeah.
We was also just talking about the same thing last year.
Oh, we've talked about parking.
And gave it that six-month period.
Parking is annual.
I'm just saying, when we talked about it last year, we had the same, same discussion. But that's my view is, you know, go, if we can go to 9 to 6:30.
If I can, just on the, on your comment on the, uh, county court days, Randy, the county does give, anyone that has to come into county court gets a placard, uh, from the county to put on their car, and they can park anywhere in the borough but on the tee, I think. Anywhere outside, they're, they get, you know, they get to park for free.
We, we communicated years ago with the county, and they said they would not have them park on the tee. So, we wanted that to be kept open.
They, they can if they feed the meters.
I guess, yeah.
And how much, can you put $2 in a meter?
Yeah, you, you, if you put it to, uh, anyone that came in for court likely would get a ticket because the maximum on a single-space meter is, uh, two hours.
Yeah, and if you're there longer, you know, the meter's going to run out.
But to answer your question, Randy, could you change the time? That's, yeah, if council wants to do that, that's up to you. We can, the meters, the time on the meters can be changed, uh, overnight.
These are all digital electronic meters.
Okay. Answered my question.
Any other questions for parking discussion? If not, we'll move on to the PSAB resolutions.
These, these resolutions were prepared based on discussions at the Senator County Borough's Association meeting. So, we'll do a similar set for that group. They're due here in a few days. The actual resolutions are in the regular meeting materials, in the packet of materials with your regular meeting agenda. Uh, they are on the topics that we talked about at, again, at the Senator County Borough's Association meeting, specifically law and treaty titles. We're, we're requesting the state to look at adopting a fee for state police coverage. It's been something that's been talked about, uh, for some, some years. The other one is for PENDOT to maintain storm drain systems located in state right-ofways in the borough boundaries. For whatever reason, they do not maintain these storm drains, uh, not in boroughs, but only in townships. We're asking them to maintain them whether they're in a borough or a township in their state right-ofway.
Trees boroughs is fair.
Yes. The other one is that we are requesting the state to increase funding for police, fire, and emergency medical services. All three are very critical, very important public services. All three really do not have adequate funding sources. Uh, so, we're looking, asking the state to see if they can do something there. And then lastly, uh, we're asking the state to amend what is known as the right-to-know law. In general, there's a couple areas that, uh, we feel that we become overburdened on, or that the law is itself being abused. They call it vexatious requesters and, uh, commercial data miners. So, we're specifically asking for some kind of relief in those two areas. Uh, for example, we'll get commercial entities emailing our right-to-know officer who is Don, uh, you know, out of state, saying, send us your list of building permits, or send us your personnel information, whatever it is. They're simply mining for data. You know, and the state has very narrow ways on how to address that, and it's at, at our local taxpayer expense. Same thing with, if someone wants to request five times a day, send us the same, or similar request. We have no way, no relief under the act of dealing with that. You know, we can't say that enough is enough. We have to comply with the requests. So, we're asking for relief in those two areas. Uh, just, that's in a nutshell what we have. We certainly have a few more days. We could always add something in addition. But that's what we have on the, on the agenda in the regular meeting this evening.
So, when we get to that part of the agenda, I'm going to make a motion to amend the one on the, uh, fee system for state police, the very first one you mentioned, to add who, the, on the, therefore be resolved. Right now, it says, uh, therefore be resolved that Bellefonte Borough urges the Pennsylvania State Legislature to enact the fee system for state police coverage for municipalities greater than 3,500 in population. I want to add, who do not have their own police services. Because without that, that's saying that we're not only, we'd be paying for our police services, but we would also be paying this additional fee. We add that, and we're saying that we, we're already paying for police services. Why should we be paying more? We need the other, the, the step up.
That makes sense to clarify that, yes. I think that's a good suggestion.
So, I will add that during the committee.
Sure. So, and, I mean, it's a summary of what we have for the resolution. Again, like, uh, following what the Senator County Borough's Association approved, we'll send a similar set on their behalf. That's what we have. That's that.
Okay. Any other questions for the resolutions?
The last item real quick is just comments on the state transportation plan. They did a two-year look back, and there's a report card for that. They're looking ahead for two more years. They're taking public... two more years. They're taking public comment primarily through a survey that's really geared towards individuals, individual elected officials. You know, you, yourself or citizens can go in and fill out the survey. Basically, they're gonna look for where should their priorities be for the next two years in the transportation system? What do you use in the transportation system? Percentages, you know, public transit, auto, you know, walking trails, whatever it is. You can individualize your responses and of course, where funding should be prioritized to. So I would encourage the people here to fill out the survey. There is a public online or virtual session, April 12th, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. What I'll do is I'll forward you this information sheet that came out a couple of weeks ago, just so you have it fresh. But again, the online public meeting, public forum is April 12th, 6:30 to 8:00. And then the only other thing is do the survey. If you want to look at the report card that they looked, they put together for the last two years, it's there as well. You can see how the state ranked themselves in the different categories of information. It was a pretty good survey. But I, you know, we can also post the same information on our website. We have till April 30th to complete any of the surveys or submit any information.
Questions?
Thank you. That was what I was gonna ask and put it on the website so the public could get actual-
We'll do that. We'll do that.
Yes. That will take from the public, from, you know, from citizens, elected officials, and so on.
Okay. We're running out of time. 7:30. I'll adjourn the work session. The business meeting to order at 7:30. Welcome everyone to the Bellefonte Borough Council Meeting. First, we'd like to pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the broad and forth it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Benir.
Present.
Mr. Brackbill.
Here.
Ms. Cleaton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean is excused. Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tostie Vacy.
Here.
And Mayor Johnson is also excused.
Okay. In accordance with Act 65 of 2021, in a matter that is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action on it with some exceptions. Council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council should state the reason why the action is being added to the agenda. Council may vote to add an action item or items to the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion to add something to tonight's agenda?
I do.
Yes.
I'd like to change the written communications, joy of gardening, from no action needed to motion to approve.
Written communication.
It's the second item under written communication. It says that, it just says-
Oh, no action.
It says no action. It should be saying-
You want an action item.
Yeah. I just wanna change.
You got it. So you're making the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Debra. Any discussion? Those in favor? Oh, are we doing a roll call vote for this?
I guess you are.
Are we doing it for this as well? Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. I do have an announcement. We had a personnel executive session before the work session and this business meeting. So we're now to public comment. Public comment period is for oral comments regarding any action items listed on this meeting's agenda or any comments in general. No deliberations will be entered into by council at this time. If you would please sign in, come to the podium at, when it's available, and state your name, address, and what items you are speaking about. Please try to limit comments to three minutes and hopefully everybody would sign in at their register before you come into the room. Yes, Mr. Benir. Where is the timer? I don't know. Somebody put it in a drawer.
You can't run it from behind.
We're gonna give you that because you can do it. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Claudia Wilson.
Good evening, Claudia. How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
256 North Wilson Street in Bellefonte. I wish that somebody had told me that you were gonna be discussing and thinking about no mow May because I would have come to that meeting and because I was the person that brought it forward last year. So anyway, I did watch the, the meeting and saw the comments. And I just want to suggest that you take some time, not now, but to reconsider. And I have brought some information that I would like to leave.
Sure.
For people to read and to just, because I did understand that there was some, you know, concerns about the appearance and, and some people maybe not adhering to the one-month timeframe. But I did hear people saying, but you could cut your lawn a little less often and higher. And they do have a lomo May, a lomo May idea where you, you cut your lawn less often, give it a chance to diversify so that there is more diversity in flowering and small plants. Because the other part of this is that we are a bee city. We have that designation as a bee city and as a beekeeper. And the reason that I keep bees is for pollinators, not for honey. And there is also, you know, we're, we're facing a lot of lack of diversity in our environment. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, just having lots of lawn space. And also, the chemicals that are used to keep those lawns nice and green and not diversified are also affecting the pollinators. So I just wanted to make a quick statement and I'm gonna leave this information. There is information about how no mow May or low mow May came to be about. There is summaries of some studies that have been made about the benefits of, of having more diversification in our, in our lawns. I know that ticks are a concern and there's a suggestion about, you know, yes, they are a concern and more so, especially as we haven't had a cold winter. But, you know, a person's suggestion about how you can deal with that. And then there is a, I have found some information from Penn State about changing our thoughts about our landscaping and our lawns and making them more natural. And I know that one of the comments that was made was about having higher grass that would encourage snakes. And I had, I kinda laughed at that. But there is a list of myths. And one of the myths is natural landscapes attract vermin. And then some information about that. So I just wanted to present this information because I still think that this is an important thing and that we would be, it would be important to reconsider. And if we could even do a lomo May instead of a no mow May because some people, you know, are a little bit adverse to none as opposed to some and at a higher level. So I wanna leave this information with you to pass around and maybe you'll reconsider this idea. And I'd love to come back and talk with you about doing this. I have tried to contact the person that's in charge of it in State College because I wanted to find out how their program went and I still haven't gotten a reply. So I'm still gonna, gonna continue to see if I can talk with that person. And one of the things that they did was that they provided little signs for people so that neighbors would understand why I'm not cutting my lawn this month. And I think that that might be something that would be helpful. So I will hand it to you and then hopefully there'll be some more consideration about it. And if you'd let me know, I'd like to know that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Yes, Chris.
I didn't sign in. I'll sign in right after. I promise.
You better. We'll make sure of that. You're on video.
Thanks for allowing me. My name's Chris Morelli. I'm on 162 East Curtain Street. And just two comments. One, you talked about parking in the working session. I think it's, it's a good idea to revisit some of the timeframes. And just something to think about. You know, folks may come into town, town 6 o'clock, 6:30 for dinner. First of all, I think maybe, and you guys know better than I do, maybe a lot of the retail places are closed after 5:00 or 6:00. I may be wrong. But obviously, you have the restaurant thing. So that's when you're dealing, do we start at 5:00 or 8:00 or what's the pendulum in between? One of the things you consider is, if I come into town and I have to put, I don't know, you know, half hour's worth of quarters in to go eat at a restaurant or wherever, I may stay there longer if I don't have to keep running out to put quarters in and spend, and spend a lot more money in the restaurant. So, you know, you can put that on your, on your list when you talk about this at whatever point. A comment, two comments on the agenda. I was wondering, I think you should have attachments on the agenda, public. With the exception of obviously the executive session stuff and personnel stuff, everything else is kind of public property. So it's gonna, you know, if I look at the agenda and I want an attachment, I don't want to be calling every 10 minutes or every week or every other week having someone go look them up and attach them. Just in the process of putting something on the agenda, I don't care what it is. I mean, everything, most of the stuff you do and talk about, you know, folks that are gonna have a festival or whatever, they all come with an application that you guys look at. Hopefully, you look at it before. But if you don't, you should have it in front of you, you guys should have it in front of you too. And I don't know what you use, you use board docs or whatever. It sounds like you probably do have access to that. But you can open up, obviously, the public stuff to the public and be a lot easier. And we can prepare for comments ahead of time if we see something on an application or whatever. So I'd like to see that type of stuff, any type of application. I'd also like to see things that, any attachments, obviously, that you can share other than, you know, personnel-type stuff or other confidential stuff. With your voting, things like hard requests. You approve a hard request, you can have a description. I'd like, you know, I think we should see the detail. I can get the detail if I'm gonna sit in hard meetings. I can, but everybody doesn't have the, take the time, what work's doing today, you know, things like that. So just something to consider. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chris.
Other comments? Council members, any comments?
I had some at the end. Do you want me to do them now?
Um, we can wait till the, is that okay with you?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on. Communications. Do you wanna talk about-
Sure, I can give you the title. The first one is just a notice that Pendott's going to be reviewing their projects across the district. They're in District 2. And that event is this coming Friday, April 7th. I don't have the exact time here on the agenda.
I think it said 10:00 AM.
10, I think that's correct. 10:00 AM in Telly Ram Park. Again, it's not just Bellefonte or whatever. Projects throughout the district. They will talk about the reconstruction of the wall along South Water Street as well as the other projects.
Actually, it's 11:00 o'clock.
11:00? Okay, thank you.
Gazbo, if anyone is welcome.
Well, the gazebos, if it's raining, if not raining, not raining, they'll be out in front of the gazebo. But that part of Telly Ram Park, anybody's welcome, as Dawn just said. So that's this coming Friday, the 7th. And you're welcome to attend. The next item is what Ms. Tostie Vacy was referring to, the Joy of Gardening of April 15th event. Telly Ram Park Edible Garden, there's an event there. We, we weren't sure, our staff that handles special events considered this a special event. So we, what we decided to do is set it at the table, get some clarification from council on this, is it an event or not, and then we'll act accordingly. So.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Joy of Gardening on April 15th at the Edible Garden with no fees at all because it is a borough-sponsored event. Okay, let's be paying ourselves. That makes sense.
Second to the motion?
I'll, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Ms. Cleaton.
Of the motion.
In some ways, depending on what we're doing, depending on what's going on and what type of trash is being, I see that on all the new, what do I call them, applications that came out, new pressures are figured out and that costs. So just throwing that out there. Nobody got anything to free, drop the $400, $200, and then everything else goes through the system of what it costs to take out the garbage that's left behind if they might not.
But why would the borough be paying a garbage fee to the borough when it is a borough responsibility? In addition to that, this particular event is not going to be producing any garbage. They're going to be like, less than 30 people. And we had a meeting, at one of the meetings, I think it was last year, when the woman who was doing the picnics, who'd provided those events in the park, there was a decision by council that said if there's going to be less than 30 people expected for the event, then we did not have to reserve the park. When, when this was set up, the date was finalized on March 7th, which is inside the 60-day period that this application requires, I called Dawn up and I said, do we need to have a park event application for this since it's less than 30 people? And he told me no. So we did not do any event application at all until Friday afternoon when Ralph and Gina contacted me. And I was out of town, so I didn't get in until Saturday morning. And so then I went ahead and filled it out. So I did it as quickly as I could. But I did it on the, we didn't do the application on the understanding that because this was such a small event that it didn't need to reserve the entire park. So that was part of what Ralph was saying, we need to have a conversation.
Can I say, Ralph?
Sure.
I based that on the same thing that, this is, this is exactly under the same principle that- Clearwater Conservancy came in a couple of years ago and had, where they asked to use Tallyrand Park and all the parks in the center region. And, you know, people were going through and they were doing tours of it. So this is really what the gardening program, based on our meeting, that I saw it as similar because it's just basically people coming and learning about gardening, standing over in one section of the park. So that's why I didn't think it, you know, required the form.
Well, that's fine. And of course, myself and our main staff person, who's been handling these applications, we're not in those communications. We don't know, we didn't know what size event. We didn't, but it sounded like an event on the face of things. So we, again, we don't want to look like we're favoring this group over that group. So we, just to clarify, in a really short notice, we just said, well, let's just put it at the table so we're all on the same page.
So I don't know if we need a vote or not, but I wanted to make, if we do, it's here now. The other thing I think helping clarify that policy is true. And one other thing that I noticed because of this, I went on the website to find the application. The website on the application is the old one, it's not the new one. That needs to be changed.
Any other questions for the motion? Any other discussion for the motion?
I don't, I don't have necessarily a problem with this. I do have a problem with exactly what Ralph said, taking, you know, doing one thing for one and not the other. And again, short notice of things, you know, these things need to be put in so that we have time to, or the staff has time to look at and get things done with it. I'm not opposed to it, but I don't want to see it spark something so say, well, how big do I have to be?
It isn't big.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about anybody.
I'm just saying, this came up at the last meeting. And as a staff person, I would like some direction or a definition on what you guys are calling an event because right now, there is no definition.
Right.
You know, someone using a soccer field, in my mind, what's the event? There's no event to that. But yet, last meeting, it was an event. So if you guys are going to qualify everything as an event, then it'll be easy for us. We can tell everybody, just fill out the application. But we just need to know.
So that's partly what I was saying.
Well, with that in mind, what about the PennDOT project preview? To me, that's an event if they're inviting the media.
And they're going, you're going to have to.
We have no idea what the attendance is.
Well, I think that's what Don is asking for, clarification.
So how do we determine?
I think there was some miscommunication. Don was going on the information that he had from previous experiences. I think he made the right decision doing it. And then on the other hand, there was no information exchange with Ralph and Alyssa.
Sure.
So he was following the policy that we created, we thought. So there was some miscommunication. I think it's, it will be a work session event very quickly.
Good.
So let's get it for next work session and we'll clarify this event. But for now, I'd like to call for the vote. A roll call vote on this motion that's on the floor right now.
Okay, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
And Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Great. Moving on. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent.
Thank you, Randy, second to that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bernier?
Any discussion on the consent agenda? No discussion?
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you, Dawn.
I heard Purnell was the second.
I heard Bernier.
There was two of us.
I think I heard her first. Well, you're closer to her.
This is good here.
Well, we'll go with, we'll go with Bernier and Purnell.
Sounds good to me. Moving on to reports. Y'all, there's very few reports. We do have Gina. Gina, would you like to come to the podium for any comments? Nothing? Because we have nothing.
Questions?
Any questions for Gina? You're off the hook.
Yes.
Thank you, Gina. Wait, here's one.
You sent a link for the, I think I sent you an email by getting a link for the hard meeting.
Hard meetings? Thanks. Just when we have them?
Yeah. Is that tomorrow or next Tuesday?
Oh, it's next Tuesday. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just let me know.
Yep, I did. I sent you an email.
Right. But if you would like a link, let me know close to the time and I'll send you a link.
Same for the public.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I, we don't, the link, we don't, like if.
You don't publish either.
It's by request.
Yes.
Right, yeah. If you would like a link, you can email me and I will send you the link. Thanks.
Any other questions for Gina? Thank you, Gina.
Yep.
Current and old business, quite lengthy with the, you see the special events applications and they were all in your packet. And I don't know if I need to explain this, but the policy goes, the applications are submitted to the borough staff. The borough staff reviews the events from now on. And the event applicant supplies all the information and it is vetted through the borough staff. And then the borough staff makes a recommendation to Borough Council with the application in our packet. And if you have a question at this time of any event, now's the time to ask it. Otherwise, we're going to take them all at one time, but we'll, we'll take out the ones that there may be a question on. So does somebody have a question on one of the events that we're going to approve? Yes, Joanne?
There are two. The Center Gives Fest and the Central Pennsylvania Tasting Craft.
Center Give Fest and?
The Central Pennsylvania Tasting Craft Beverage Expo.
You got it. So we're going to pull those out. Any others? Okay, I'm asking for a motion to approve the ones that are not pulled out.
I'll make that motion, Brackville.
Do I need to read through those?
You might be helpful for the public.
Okay.
Do I have a second first?
Do I have a second to Randy's?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joanne. Motion to approve the special event applications for Novelle Conne, May 6th, Outdoor Adventure Expo, May 21st, Friday in the Font Movies in the Park, May 26th, June 30th, July 28th, September 29th, October 27th, Bellefonte Community Band Concert on July 4th, Watermark in the Park, September 17th, Bellefonte Field of Dreams Volleyball Tournament, that's June 6th, Bellefonte Soccer Association, March 28th through June 10th, Bellefonte Art Museum Monthly Reception, first Sunday in, from, starting in April through December of '23, Good News Adventure Camp, July 31st through August 4th. Those are the ones we are voting on at this time. Roll call, Mr. Holderman.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to, do we do these individually, Joanne, or can we take them both together?
I think, I think it might be, what do you think?
I think it's actually.
It's the same question.
It's the same question about.
So the motion is to?
That both of those have waivers.
I need a motion.
Okay, that's where I'm coming.
Okay.
Both of those have waivers and both of those are not nonprofits based in Bellefonte.
Let's see, do I get to that application? Will you beat me to it? I'm looking for it.
Joanne, can you tell, can you say what those two are again?
Yes, it's the Center Gives Fest. They're located in State College.
Center Gifts.
Center Gifts.
Okay, thank you.
And the other is the Central Pennsylvania Tasting Craft Beverage Expo, which is sponsored by the Center.
Well, they're special events, I believe. That's why there's no, no fees.
But there, our policy is that events or special events have, get fee waivers if they are a nonprofit based in Bellefonte. Neither one of those are based in Bellefonte.
I have the Center Gives, address is 1377 Ridge Master Drive in State College. And for the Tasting Trail, their address is 19 Colony Way, Colony Way in State College.
Okay. Do we want to?
The only thing I know is that people at Big Spring Spirits contact us.
But they're not a nonprofit?
No, they're not a nonprofit.
They're the ones who are hosting it.
Yeah, they host. I don't know if they formed a nonprofit. I'm not sure, you know, why that's marked waived.
Foundation is one of them.
The Tasting Trail is right after Center Foundation.
If you want to approve on a conditional basis, the fact that they're, they're associated with a Bellefonte nonprofit. Otherwise, they pay the fee just, just to keep things moving. I mean, we could do it that way.
We've never done that with any of the others before, but.
Oh, it is a stipulation.
Yeah.
It doesn't, that way, nothing stops.
Well, I thought we all, and we didn't give a waiver for those groups that were outside of Bellefonte.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, so I'd have to check to see why that's marked that way. But I agree, our past practice is no waiver unless they're a Bellefonte nonprofit.
And they are not. So I'm not willing to make a, a motion to waive the fee, a conditional waive. I want to make a motion to accept these without the waivers.
To?
To make them pay the full fee.
You want to make that motion?
Yes. I want to say that these two need to pay all the fees, including the reservation, park reservation.
Both Center Gives and Central Pizza.
Correct.
You're making that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second. Any more discussion on that? Hearing done. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee, Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you, Dawn. Moving on. Yard Waste Pickup begins Wednesday, April 12th. Let's see, the payment.
Thanking to y'all for giving that call out.
Okay.
I got that call. I was in that area.
Very good.
Do you have any questions and you'd like to be added to the waitlist? Call the Borough Office, 814-355-1501.
For one of the cans.
For one of the cans, yes.
Get on the list.
Yeah.
Okay, the next is an action item, Masonic Lodge Parking Lot Lease. I need a motion and a second to approve the parking lot lease agreement between Bellefonte Borough and the Masonic Lodge. It's in your packet.
I'll make that motion.
Deborah Clayton, second to Deb's motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joanne. Discussion on the lease with the Masonic Lodge, something we've done in years past.
It's the same lease.
Pretty much.
Increase, yes, an increase in the fee, the lease amount. But other than that, it's essentially the same.
Other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
This is too easy tonight.
The other one, it is not an action item, but in your packet, you'll see the note about the Ridge Street between High Street and Pike Street. Oh, it is a motion.
Yes, yes.
I thought that was an admin decision. Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the staff's recommendation to leave the street as it is, with the exception of not allowing parking on both sides of Ridge Street due to the narrowness of the road.
I'm, I'm going to make the motion, but I'm going to change the wording slightly to make it a little bit clearer. I'm going, want to leave the street as it is with the exception of not allowing parking on either side of, of the Ridge Street due to the narrowness of the road.
I would just add between Pike and High.
Okay, between Pike and High.
That's the only section we're changing anything.
Pike and High. And I'll explain why I changed the word after some of the seconds.
I'll second. Good. Questions on the motion?
The reason I changed it from both sides to either side is that I think somebody could read into both sides and say, well, I parked on this side, so I can't park on the other side now. But by saying either side of the street, that means no matter where you are on that section of the street, you can't park there.
That's fine. Great. Roll call, please, Mr. Holderman.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Moving on to resolutions. And again, we're going to take these all at once unless somebody wants to pull one out. They're all in your packet.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolutions.
PSAB?
Yep. You want the, you want the numbers?
For the proposed resolutions?
Yes.
At the PSAB?
PSAB resolutions, yes.
Yeah.
You want that number? You want resolution 04032023.02? That's for State College or for state police coverage, fee for state, you know, coverage. Resolutions 04032023.03, that's PennDOT Maintenance of Storm Systems.
Yep.
Resolution number 04032023.04, Increase Funding for Police, Fire and EMS Services. And resolution 04032023.05, Amend State Right to Know Law.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Barbara. Discussion?
Yes, I want to amend resolution 04032023.02, the, to add to the, therefore be it resolved, paragraph adding at the end, who do not have their own police services? So that entire paragraph would now read, now therefore be it resolved that Bellefonte So that entire paragraph would now read, "Now therefore be it resolved that Bellefonte Borough urges the Pennsylvania State Legislature to enact a fee system for state police coverage for municipalities greater than 3,500 in population who do not have their own police services."
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second to Clayton.
I will just point out that there's a lot of municipalities that have their own police departments that require state police assistance.
This...
Just, just so it's not too confusing, you know, which I believe that, you know, there's, there's lots of local police departments that can't cover their towns and communities 24/7, so they ask boroughs and troopers to come in, which I think is all Bellefonte's doing.
Yeah.
Some, that's fine, I guess, but that would include, you know, they're all like that. There's a lot like that.
Not just the ones with the population.
Right. There's a lot that have, that employ a chief and a one-part timer. Well, they can't cover seven days a week 24/7. I'm just pointing that out. I don't know if that changes anything. I don't think that it matters. But what are we asking for the fee for? Because we're thinking about...
It's a legislative request.
Yeah.
I think, I think Joanne's request, I'm sorry.
It's for municipalities who get 100% state police coverage and the population of that municipality is greater than 3,500.
So even if it's, even if you have like we do, part-time, you know, we're still paying for police, so we wouldn't contribute any more
To that fee.
to this based on what Joanne is saying.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. I, I don't know what it means to those that...
We're going to have to pay.
It'd be, it might be a slight, might be a sliding scale. If you get four hours a day or 10 hours a day or whatever, by some kind of scale for communities greater than 3,500.
Okay.
You're not convinced yet. I can tell, yeah. But, so, your thoughts?
I, I don't understand it, but I, I'm in, I'm in favor of whatever provides more police coverage toward Borough. I'm just like, I think everybody at this table is. Why, why it has to be confusing, I'm not sure, but maybe it's just me that's confused.
I think it, I think, Kent, this, this has come up almost every single year. I think where PSA, the State of Borough's Association, I think they're just supporting the state police to being able to generate revenue from municipalities that currently the taxpayers are paying it. But like in Bellefonte, we're paying for state police and we're paying for our own police through taxes.
Through taxes, yeah.
In, in a neighboring township that doesn't have their own police force, they're paying for state, state police, but they don't pay any, you know, there's, there's no other... So essentially what this resolution, or I think what they're trying to do at the state level is get legislators to support these municipalities that aren't paying for state police, you know, to have to pay a little bit more.
For the extra service.
For the service.
Okay. I like it.
Okay. Any other questions for the motion?
So this is the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
And Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Okay, now we can vote on the resolutions, as corrected or amended. And do what, you want the number again?
That's all four.
04, 32, 02, 3, oh, okay.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, counsel. Next item. This is the police contract. Thank you to our contract negotiating committee and the police for coming to this conclusion. We've all read it.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft police contract of 20, for 2023 to 2025, was it?
Yeah, through, through 2025.
To ratify?
To ratify, yes.
I will second that motion.
That was, you got them? Yep.
Clayton seconded the motion.
Comments on the motion?
I, I'll just, again, give credit to the team that did the negotiations and the management that helped throughout that, and I think it went well for negotiations.
Other comments? Roll call, Mr. Holdren.
Uh, Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
New business. First item, resolution number 04032023-01, acceptance of funds for the Bellefonte Streetscape Safety Project. I'd like a motion and a second for this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deb.
I'll second.
Thanks, Kent. Discussion.
Do we know what the amount of the funds are?
We have about, uh, this is the TASSA grant. There's about 300 and approximately $350,000 in that grant. Deborah.
For the public, do you want to, I, just briefly explain what it is?
The, the, uh, TASSA grant is PennDOT funds. It's, uh, we're using those funds in conjunction with two years of CDBG funds to do the Streetscape project on West Bishop Street in front of the Waffle Shop, up to the corner of Smokers Express and down to High Street. The CDBG funds, as you heard a couple meetings ago, that project, we hope to get underway, at least out to bid, uh, in early summer with fall construction, and that would be from Smokers Express down to where Representative Banghoff is on High Street. The TASSA funds will do the other side of the street, Dollar General, BFW, uh, that side of the street, and then down the other side opposite of West Bishop. Uh, so it'll be sidewalks and, uh, you know, it'll look like you saw here a couple meetings ago. That's, that's what we're talking about.
So what's the timeframe of that again?
The, the TASSA grant, uh, will take a little bit longer. We'll probably work on the, uh, the CDBG portion in the fall, and then late this year, we hope to bid out the TASSA contractor, bid, you know, RFP, and hopefully get that going by, say, March of 2024.
Okay, so this won't interfere with the work going on on Water Street at this point, and, uh,
Yeah.
the changes may hit the trap.
Fortunately. We had just...
It's going to be a busy place, courthouse.
Yes.
Uh, this and Water Street all at once are closely linked together, so I, we're ready for a roll call vote, I believe. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please, Mr. Holdren.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Next item is, I need a motion and a second to remit payment to John Nastis Construction for the Governor's Park Ball Field Project.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kent. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Joanne. Discussion.
I just want to mention for the public, the invoice is for $251,477.50.
I wanted to say that I wrote out, I went, took a tour out there. The field looks really nice. How close is it to completion, if I may ask?
This Wednesday, we'll do a punch out with the architect, Weber Murphy &amp; Fox. I anticipate a few leftover items, probably around the press box and things like that. The field is pretty close, actually ready to, is ready to go. There'll be a couple, there'll be a couple items left over that will, they'll continue working on.
It was lined and the bases were in one. That was last week.
They put the new sizes in?
The new bases.
I told you, major league, major bases, big.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Just an announcement, the Borough Office are closed Friday, April 7th, for Good Friday. Refuge will not be collected on Friday. Refuge will be collected on Wednesday, April 5th, um, for, uh, 2023. Next item is PSAB voting delegate appointments. In your packet, there's two council members. This would be to appoint Barbara Dan as the voting delegate for 2023, um, and appoint Doug Johnson as alternate voting delegate for 2023 at the June, uh, PSAB, uh, conference.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Rita.
Purnell.
I'll second Brackville.
Thank you, Randy. Discussion. Mr. Holdren, roll call vote.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we're at the last item. Council member comments for the good of the order. Um, I'll start with myself, give you all a minute to think about what, what you want to say. I don't like to catch anybody off guard, which I have in the past. I apologize for that if I did. Um, I have nothing. Oh, I do have something. I'm just happy to be here. All right, Dawn.
Couple things, I don't know if Ralph is going to mention this, just in case, uh, the Borough is going to do leaf collection. They're going to run around from April 10th through the 14th.
Nice.
So anybody that has leftover leaves that blew around this weekend, regular to curb, and they'll get picked up, uh, the week of April 10th through the 14th.
Next week.
Yes.
I saw the street sweeper out today.
And the other thing I was going to mention is the street sweeper started today. They started out in Parkview Heights, so, Mr. Bernier, you ought to be happy about that. Uh, they're going to work their way in, uh, to the Borough.
Yeah, so, so there's two different operations or services. Street sweeping, as you've heard, started today. Leaf collection is just the week of April 10th through the 14th. So, uh, hopefully, uh, we, we get out to see you, or if you have any leaves, get them out as soon as you can. We'll be coming by in the next couple of weeks. I think that's all I have. We, I just want to say...
Musser Lane's open on Saturday.
Musser Lane's opened as of April 1st, which was Saturday. Is it eight, nine to, nine to?
Eight to 11:45.
Eight to 11:45. Thank you. That's open now throughout the season. Uh, if you want to drop leaves off or whatever, grass cuttings, Saturday morning, you can do that. You can also do it during the business hours.
Till 2:00 P.M.
Till 2:00 P.M., Monday through Friday.
Thursday, Thursday, Friday, you got to be there by one.
There are slight changes. Thank you. But, we're getting it pretty close, but like, I mean, the hours are pretty much the same as they have been during the week. We didn't change that. But Saturday, of course, with the season starting, uh, that's, that's been, started up again. I just wanted to quickly just, you know, mention publicly that we're still doing little odds and ends on the armory building. Our primary goal right now is to get the ADA access, and it's almost like a temporary ADA access in place by the end of April to suit some of the current tenants over there. Uh, we are going out to bid or in that process for the elevator, the more formal ADA improvements to the building. Uh, they're, they're sort of all combined together. Uh, so that work, we're waiting for those bids to come in, but things are progressing. It just takes time, uh, to get, you know, all the specs put together and go through the formal bidding processes, but it's moving forward. Everything looks, is, you know, working out very well. Uh, so I just wanted to report that since we're here in a couple minutes.
Right. And don't rake your curb, or your leaves onto the, leaves do not belong on the street to clog our sanitary, our drains on the street. Keep it between the curb and the sidewalk if you have that area.
Thank you.
I have a question.
It's not your turn yet.
No, I have a question as well.
Okay, okay. He went out of turn too.
Well, you didn't tell me to go. I followed whatever you said.
You said that you're doing the temporary ADA accessibility. I understand that we're going to be putting permanent concrete in. At the last EAB meeting, there was a suggestion that, uh, you advertise when that comes. So anybody here in town who wants to see that process happening, let us know.
We'll, we'll do our best.
It's this week.
It's this week. Is, I mean, we're trying to coordinate.
Okay.
And that kind of thing. Uh, we'll try to get the word out as best we can. I mean, once, once the concrete is poured, which will be pervious, people can go look at it after the fact.
Okay.
Uh, but it's, you know, kind of new to our, to us doing this kind of work. So we, anybody, once we get some pictures and tell people where to go look at it, you know, have at it, we'll advertise it and that kind of thing.
I think, I think people would be interested.
Yes. Yes. Randy.
Sure, let's talk about goals and action items.
Okay.
The Musser Lane, ours were approved, is that, is that correct? Was it last meeting?
We just, uh, mentioned them, Saturday, Friday.
It was approved at our last meeting on, uh, 20th of March. So that needs to be pulled out and put under the green layer that that's done. And then, then I got confused about the Musser, it's in yellow, probably the fifth one in line on the yellow sheet. Uh, Musser Lane Compost Facility bins.
Okay.
And then on the other side, it says cameras have been installed.
Cameras are installed, yes.
So is all that, is that completed as well?
The bins are not.
Bins are not.
That's part of the...
Okay. I didn't, wasn't sure if we're...
Getting done.
Now, those are ones that were rented or sent there or whatever that?
They'll be more like Jersey barriers, like when you go down there now, Randy, where we have the compost sitting. That's what we mean by a...
So the bins will just be there all the time?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I just wasn't sure which bins, because we talked about waste bins and...
Right.
I think that's all I had for me.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Joanne.
Okay, uh, I received a letter this morning from one of my constituents on North Thomas Street. She couldn't be here this evening. Uh, she raised a concern about the black vultures being fed by a neighbor. Uh, she's concerned about the damage of nearby property and the health and safety issues of rotten meat being left outside. Um, she did attach a picture to all the vultures on the road there where they're being fed. I did forward it on to Ralph, Dawn, and Doug. Doug for, I mean, Ralph forwarded it to our Animal Control Office. We said that black vultures are out of their jurisdiction and suggested contacting the Pennsylvania Game, uh, Commission. She also sent me another letter a little bit later in the afternoon. She says, it's not just an issue of trying to get the black vultures to leave, but it's an issue of, uh, that someone is, uh, littering discard meat products and organ, organ meats on someone else's property, and who has a landlord who's refusing to deal with the rent or causing the disturbance and creating a public health hazard. She's wondering, in addition to contacting the, uh, Pennsylvania Game Commission about the birds themselves, is there something that our nuisance officer can do? Is there any rental requirements on the books? She wanted to know about a health department, which I haven't told her yet, because we don't have a health department. We have, we'd have, she'd have to go to the state for that. And, uh, is this considered trespassing or littering under all ordinance?
Hey, it sounds to me like it's either a police matter or a littering matter or a nuisance go. I think, uh, you know, the information was given back to whoever
Yeah.
about contacting the Pennsylvania Game Commission. I think that would be a good place to start, because I'm not sure, I don't know the rules about feeding wild animals.
Okay.
And then, of course, uh, trespassing is a private property matter.
Okay.
In most cases, there's a whole set of laws that govern that. Uh, typically, the property owner themselves have to be the, you know, the person who is aggrieved or, yeah, files a complaint, what have you. Uh, but I would recommend starting with the Pennsylvania Game Commission and, and seeing what, what they can do. They have their own set of enforcement officers. Uh, the, the problem can be described to them, and maybe they can issue some kind of citation or something. Yeah, maybe they're not permitted to feed the vultures.
Yeah.
That might be the, you know, the first step.
I mean, when, when we dealt with this out by Missoula Park, how was that handled?
We didn't do anything. The county, the county did, they, they were landing on the county's roof. Uh, but we, we didn't, I think, may, we might have called, called the Game Commission.
We did.
But I don't know that they did anything.
I don't think they did, because they were gone when they showed up.
We got a couple prices, one from Early going, uh, you know, trying to do something, and then, uh, uh, someone else's, well, maybe the game was the Game Commission.
Anything else, Joanne?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Deb.
Yes, Wednesday, April 5th, at noon, the PSEB webinar will be on intersection safety, and on Wednesday, the 12th, at 2:00 P.M., the Federal Highway Administration webinar is going to be on smart intersection technology to improve safety and mobility for the traveling public, including drivers, bikers, and pedestrians. I thought both of these tie into current and ongoing projects. I'm signed up for both of these, and typically we get recordings, so I'll have access to all of that. And over the winter, I had vultures sitting on my chimney covers, keeping their feet warm.
So does that, this, this Wednesday and Friday?
Uh, uh, the 5th is the PSAB at noon.
Okay.
And the 12th, at 2:00 P.M., is the Federal Highway Administration. And that's more of a, a tech thing with cameras and scanners and information gathering.
And that's a Friday?
You say it's a Friday?
Oh, no, it's a Wednesday, the 12th.
They're all Wednesdays. Anything else, Deb?
Life is just a bowl of cherries.
Rita.
I have three things, but they'll be quick. Um, first, I just wanted to follow up about the train question that I had. I know there's probably no updates because you haven't sent anything.
I have not received any update. Uh, you know, just to clarify, I think the, the TSA, which is a National Transportation Security Administration, deals with security of, of, you know, the, I guess, flights, airplanes, trains, what have you. They have, the, the owners of the track and the cars hauling, whatever they're hauling, stated in an email, they have to get permission to release that information. I've not heard any updates. I, I can circle back and see if they have anything, but...
And the reason I ask, I just heard of another train derailment with some nasty stuff dumped into the waters out west somewhere, I believe.
Montana.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, it's just very concerning that so many of these things are happening here on waterways. I just would like to stay on that.
I don't want to speak for them or anything. We do have, there is a speed limit, like, it's like 10 miles an hour. We know the industry's in our area, and the, the track goes to a dead end. We know the industry's, you know, from here going, I guess it's south of us, the Pleasant Gap primarily. We have an idea. I can't say 100% what's hauled, but we can pretty much, you know, identify the majority of what's being hauled. Yeah, so there are, there are some assurances that we have, even though they can't say exactly what's on the tracks. But I will circle back and see if we can get anything.
I would say, since, since the one between Pennsylvania and Ohio, there's been at least four more accidents
Yeah.
uh, since then. And you got to wonder why, why is this happening all of a sudden, you know, because we weren't having that issue. But now everything, if you look at these accident reports, there's nothing, there's nothing there to see, because they're not showing you anything. Which I don't know if that's right for the people who live around something like that.
What else, Rita?
Um, second one, and this may be a little lengthy, I apologize, but, um, I would like to see some discussion about the Climate Action Plan on a future work session. I have some specific questions that I would like to have answered.
We can do that.
And one of the, one of the questions, it was, I would like to see the data that was used to create the plan, which might include the original surveys and any data calculating any of the carbon emissions. Not that I may understand all of that, but I would like to see it and see how it was formulated and where it came from. So I don't know if that's like next work session or within the next few weeks or month or whatever, but that's just something to put on the radar.
Maybe we could coordinate that with when the end of the survey is, or maybe before that survey is due. That's the end of June?
Uh, I thought it's April 30th.
April 30th? So, uh, that data should be in by our first meeting of March, is that correct?
Give me a little time.
May, I mean, I'm sorry, yes, thanks.
Let me give a--
To the future.
Thanks.
Let me get, give me a little bit of time to put it together.
Well, then that might be the opportunity to discuss the Climate Action Plan before your data's, uh, here.
I mean, we already submitted the plan, so the plan's there, right?
Yeah, no, I was thinking, she, I thought she asked to see, but that data and the current data. It's gonna take me--
I would like to see the old data for sure, but I, and the new data would also be interesting to see.
And, but it's gonna take me a couple of weeks to put that together.
Sure, sure. So--
We have lots of work sessions.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no nature, just, you know.
First or, probably the second meeting in May. That's the one I'll miss, but Kent will be taking off.
Oh, there you go.
I'll be for that.
And then my fun thing, I can't forget to wish my, my favorite friend, well, my brother-in-law, Rodney, related, happy birthday.
Oh, good. Happy birthday, Rodney.
You gonna sing?
Rodney Lee.
Uh, no, we don't need to sing.
I wasn't gonna, if you wanted to sing.
Oh, no, 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 thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Appreciate it. Kent?
No, thank you.[1560.88]